I will call the meeting to order. The chair notes that there is a quorum present. We'll do the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Okay, let's go into two point zero, which is additions and revisions to the agenda. Do we have anything?
So, do you have anything?
I do not have anything. Nope.
You want to add the wage?
Well, I don't care. I'm gonna pull it from there.
Let's add five point three. Can you add, is it from the road department internship wage?
There are five point three to road department internship wage. Anything else? Alright, let's go into three point zero, which is correspondence and public comment. Individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time and at other times throughout the meeting. Speakers are asked to raise your hands to be recognized by the chair. Give your name and address and limit comments to three minutes. For folks who are dialing in on your phone, it is star six to unmute yourself. If you are on the Zoom platform, it's the lower left-hand corner of your screen. And then my regular reminder is that we are informal here, so as we move through the agenda, we welcome feedback, comments, questions as we go. For now, is there any public comment? I don't see anything. Under correspondence, we just have one item, which is a letter from Amy Potter on behalf of the Gillon County Historical Society Board, thanking the Gillon County for the grant award. It's a special projects grant that the historical society received to do some preservation work and improve some security at the museum complex. So I won't read the whole thing. For folks who are interested in reading it, it's part of the court packet online, as is all of our correspondence. Okay, it's out there. Let's move into four point zero, which is consent agenda. Any questions on this?
Yeah, I wanna pull the five minutes, the part about the road department did not have the content, in my opinion, of the discussion we had.
Okay, do you want to?
We can.
Pull them, or do you want to take them off completely and then maybe work with Miranda?
I think we need to pull them because it doesn't really reflect all of the discussion we had.
Okay, so we'll pull them completely off the agenda. Okay.
We're not ready, because I haven't had time to get through the video and.
Okay. So we'll take those off completely and then we'll ask staff to work with Commissioner Shannon to address concerns and then bring them back for the next meeting. Anything else that you wanna pull or?
Can somebody give me a little rundown on four seven?
Oregon Department of Energy. Yeah, so. Let's get Michelle. She's not on. Okay, so here's my understanding is that when when we have a project come through that is being reviewed by FSAC, there's a portion of things that Michelle has to like check and sign off on, that what FSAC is doing aligns with what Gillon County code, planning code does. And so basically what this is, is when those projects come through, it allows us to recoup some of the planning department's costs from Department of Energy when it's a state-sided energy project that's coming in. So it's not a lot of money. I think it's total of 5,000. And it doesn't always happen because we don't always have a project that's coming in, that's coming in under an FSAC review, so.
Well, the reason I asked is the whole permitting process has been a little confusing for me to get up to speed on and how we got, what we got with the projects that are existing now. It sounds like there's some legislation to pass, possibly pass that off more to the counties to. So.
Yeah, this is just working within the current system, so that if it's large enough that it has to go under FSAC, but there's still some collaboration the county has to do with that process. This is to cover Michelle's time and any like legal counseling time, basically to help the county meet its obligations in participating in that process.
Yeah.
And you wanna keep it on there?
That's probably.
Okay. Yep.
Does that, does that help cover what recently happened with Oregon Trail?
You know what? I'll have to ask Michelle if she can go back and, and check on that, but potentially it would cover some of our costs to do that.
I would think. So are we using it? Will we get it?
I mean, it would go in general because of where the planning department is. I suspect so. We'd have to bill against it and then it would come in as general, into the general fund, so. Go into that whole pool kind of thing, since it's the planning department.
But we'd have to make the request.
I believe so. Yeah, because FSAC won't know what our costs are if we're not submitting them, so. But we can follow up with her, especially about the.
I think that's the only thing I'd ask, if you were pulling on her.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions or things that people want pulled off of consent agenda? Do we have a motion?
I moved to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Okay.
So moved and seconded that we approved the consent agenda as amended. So the amended consent agenda consists of consider approval of June 7th, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Consider approval of June 28th, 2023 special meeting minutes. Consider approval of August bills pending review. Consider approval of meal site management services agreement with CAPCO. Consider approval of juvenile crime prevention basic service services intergovernmental agreement number one five zero five one with Oregon Youth Authority and consider approval of amendment number two to IGA number, or intergovernmental agreement number one nine dash zero three zero with Oregon Department of Energy. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on into five point one. Under unfinished business is discussion regarding Columbia Hill's Manor. Pat, do you wanna kick this off? Do you want me to kick this?
Yeah, I guess you guys can kind of lead with a legal determination, but from what I read, it looked like we could move forward with introduction of board and use an entity.
Yeah, so for folks who are following along at home, there was a discussion during the June 7th meeting about Columbia Hill's Manor, which several of the board members, I think, are looking to, to retire. And kind of wondering what the long-term plan is, not just for that entity, but for their 501(c)(3) status and whether that could be repurposed or expanded purpose into housing development.
And it almost sounds like it really meets it in its current language, but we could add language to it that would help fit better the way I understood that.
Correct. Yeah, so, so we did a review to just check on the nonprofit status. Ask any concerns or like explore if there was any restrictions on government entities having representatives that are on that board. And what we have discovered is there really isn't, assuming that those elected officials and/or representatives from say governing bodies, like if Jed wanted to be on, on there, for instance, just have to make sure that there isn't a conflict of interest. So as long as they're not gaining financially in some way, shape or form, then that's allowed. And it's not actually something that has to be, really, I think what it is, is kind of looking at who might be interested and, you know, if there's a member of the court that would like to be on it, really, I think, just coordinating with the current board members on getting those people voted in.
So, so my discussion with Tia after I got the email from Lani and the legal thing was that it looked like it was something we went forward with, but in in moving toward what can we do in structuring that board so it does becomes the entity that does us some good. And I was hoping that we could, and I don't know if we can, structure with a court member, a city member from both cities and probably a court member and some at-large positions that, you know, and it's up to a nine-board, nine-member board, and I think it would be best to fill it all. And get some input on it that way. And then the question that Tia had was, do you want us to set that bylaw structure up for how that board should look through their existing board? Would you wanna do it? It only makes sense to do it with an existing board.
Yeah, so I mean, my thought is that I actually think it might be easier to do that, but informally, in that you know, there's nothing that says, for instance, that that board can't be like, okay, this is a seat typically held by a member representing Gillon County. This is a seat typically held by a member representing the city of Arlington, you know, whoever, whoever that board determined without specifying in the bylaws. Because I do think like if they start. So the question really that we were pursuing is, is there any problem with having one of us serve on that? And that was the answer that we got. We didn't really ask the question, like if the bylaws were changed to say that there was a seat held by the port or a seat held, would that change its status to a 190 intergovernmental rather than a 501(c)(3)?
I know, because it's like, isn't it anytime you change your bylaws, you have to go back to the.
Yeah, so our, our question was if more than 50% of the board was made up of public officials, would that change its status? And the answer was no. Because if you, like independently, if Catherine raised her hand in Condon and Jeff Buffton raised his hand here and you raised your hand and Jed, you know, like just because you have a connection as a public official doesn't make it a 190, but when you officially say that Gillon County has a seat, the Port of Arlington has a seat, then all of a sudden you're starting to move into a 190 territory. So that's why I'm saying informally, I think you can get where you wanna go.
The current structure is a 190, do you know?
It's a 190. Go ahead, Jed.
So is the structure strictly line by nine members?
Three to nine, three to nine.
Minimum of three.
Minimum three, maximum nine. They've got three now that all want off. And part of just in additional comment is there is nothing going on with Pioneer CDC. They're not even having meetings. I happen to know a board member pretty well that can't get a meeting put together with them. So we, we need something.
And I'm just aware, I mean, some, some organizations struggle to have enough volunteers to serve. You run a pretty large organization with three board members. I mean, you got support staff that help, but if that's a hindrance to seeing Columbia Hill's Manor successful, if that three to nine gives you that flexibility or anything.
Yeah.
My experience is that five to seven is.
I think you want.
Even five is, yeah, because you start getting up to nine, you're looking at.
Well, there's some quorum issues too sometimes with the board of nine that we've run into with other boards that we have.
Five show up.
Yeah, five, it's pretty easy to round up three people consistently, but when you have to start rounding up like five consistently.
What makes a quorum on three?
So.
Or you need all three, so.
No, quorum on three is two.
Oh, it's two.
And a quorum on three, a quorum on five is three.
Yeah, like in a county court situation, it's a little difficult because you're anytime two of you get together, you have no form of quorum.
Yeah.
So and you haven't, if you haven't publicized that as a meeting, it's a problem. And so three's kind of a problem, but five, I think is a good number, but I think leaving it open to potentially nine interested people is always a good idea in, in something like this. I mean, we got a lot of stuff going on there. We probably can generate some interest by selling this a little bit out there. And we've got this one. The, the concern's gonna be that you have to operate Columbia Manor. And so it's, I mean, that entity somehow is gonna have to get to the point that it has probably a director, administrator or director to move things forward in housing at all, because there's no way to do it. Right now, there's board members taking care of maintenance.
So I, I mean, what I suggest is like as next steps, one, if there's a member of this court, I wouldn't suggest two, because we run into quorum issues on the court side of two, even if we're not officially at a meeting, if two of us are in the room, it makes it weird to try to navigate. But if one of us wants to raise our hands.
I would love to be on it, but I'm probably creating a potential conflict of interest in some of the equipment I mine.
But then I think the other thing is conversations with all of our other public partners about is there somebody on each of their boards? Or staff members, depending on what it is. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a conversation with both of the cities, with the port, I mean, just the typical people who are gonna be partners in this. You know what? It also, you know, maybe it's a Catherine's raising her hand. Hey Catherine.
Hello there. A, I, please stay away from an ORS 190. What I was thinking, this is, this is a great organization to move our housing along. What I, what I was wondering is instead of trying to pick one from jurisdictions and, and flirting with the 190s, what if we do it somewhat like two from precinct, seven, I mean, you know, have the zones that it's pretty lax, you know, and I agree. If you can keep it at five, that's a lot better than trying to get a, a board. I do have some concerns. I had some questions was, you know, what, what's the financing of Columbia Hill's Manor? You know, if you take this on, what's the time? I mean, is it gonna require staff to, to do this?
I think. Yeah, I think Catherine, if, if you have ambitious board members, you could continue to run it along like you are now until you get to a place you need to have staff, but it's gonna need staff pretty quick if you're gonna step in any part of housing.
Yeah. Well, I, I agree. I agree. And, and the part of running it with volunteers as you get into these multimillion-dollar projects, I it's good to have a staff member, at least on the financial part. Whether that's a contract or something else, that, that can be something too, but I, I think this is a great idea to move housing forward and it does take, and Jed might disagree with me, who's sitting in the back, but I think it, it takes a lot of pressure off the port of having to change our bylaws on the environmental century and in divert that, those projects. So I, I think it's a great idea. And my question, and I think Pat answered it, was where does Pioneer CDC fit into this?
Yeah, I mean, one to your original question about the financials, when Tia came and saw us during the last meeting, she said that the, the cash flow works in terms of paying off, I think they have an outstanding loan and the rest came in from HUD grants, I think. So the amount that they're coming in from their monthly rentals more than covers that, but they don't have any paid staff, to your point, so.
And they do have a slush fund account for emergencies. I don't have no clue how much is in it, but they do, they do feel comfortable that is, and I think that's probably some of the remaining grant funds, maybe.
Yeah, no one likes the word slush funds in any of these.
Our finance director's on and is probably going, oh man, we really wanna.
We have reserves. We have reserves.
Okay, I'm just a country boy.
Regardless though, I think like what that board is saying is that they, we need to find new board members regardless, because Columbia Hills can't fold up shop. There's what, eight residents in this town that depend on those that facility for them. And so regardless, I think we need to go talk to some people about raising their hands, but I think.
We can all do that.
Asking questions about people's interest in getting involved in a greater housing issue should maybe be part of that conversation. And maybe we just need to think about who would be best suited to sit on that board, really. Go ahead, Catherine.
I am guessing too that it's gonna take a little bit of legal work to revise part of the bylaws. So I mean, I'm, I'm very interested. I'm very interested in the housing and as we go forward, I would be very interested.
The legal, the legal opinion said that it, it really covers what we're trying to do, but we might wanna define it a little clearer.
So there was enough leeway, I think, I can't remember the phrasing in the bylaws, but there's a phrase in the bylaws that says something about other projects for the community good. And so the review said that, I mean, really, housing in a place that is really in need of housing can easily be fit that definition, but that if you wanted to basically remove all questions about whether that was in that organizational scope, you could, you could do that, but it's not necessary to do that. Okay, so next steps, because you know I'm all about next steps. Jed's here, so maybe if you don't mind mentioning this to your board the next time you meet, that we're looking for potential people who, should those names come to you, Pat? Do you wanna take all the names to Tia?
Yeah, no, I would, I would take them and then Tia and I are in contact and we'll get together and then, she said it would be relatively easy for them to get together and do whatever they thought, we thought they needed to do to move forward. They could do that fairly rapidly. But I think it's a matter of coming up with a replacement board.
Okay.
I guess we can't throw in four board members then?
That's fine.
Anybody's interested, yeah.
So do we, do we need to put a notice in a paper then, or interested persons?
I mean, we could, if you wanted to.
On a website?
We could put a notice in that we're looking for board members for that.
I think.
And, I mean, it's not a county board, but we would forward those over to Tia and then their board could take up. Can we just figure out contact information from Tia? That way those requests can go to her? Yeah, we can do that. If we have somebody that we're not personally recruiting, then. Kayla Rayburn had asked if the board meet monthly. Do you know?
I do not know that. They would have a quorum every time. Well, they'd be easy then to get together anytime they want, because they're all available, or it's a tease in town. So I have no idea what they're gonna do.
I think ideally if we're moving towards this being a broader scope, they're probably gonna need to meet monthly.
Did it say in their bylaws? I don't remember now. Do you remember if it said it? It specified. And I don't remember where I started that.
We can, we'll look at that.
Yeah, we can see what if it says. They might have a requirement to meet once a month or quarterly or.
We'll track that down and then we'll work on getting something posted.
Yeah, even if we could get some interested parties, and if some interested parties have to start going to the board meetings, it'd help us to go through transition.
Yeah, because people don't want the three who know all the moving cases to just be like, here you go.
So under regular meetings, the board of directors made from time to time establish monthly or other regular meetings of the board, there's specific date, time and place to be determined by the president.
So let it be opened and.
Yeah. Ideally, monthly.
Suggestion is monthly.
But that may not be what, how much they're actually feeling like they need. Okay, so it sounds like we have next steps on that. I did also wanna note, like, something that I'm exploring and I may be bringing back at some point is there's also an interesting like model out there that some people are moving toward that is based on a land trust model. I don't know if you guys are familiar with this. So the idea is that you have a nonprofit entity whose goal is to provide affordable housing and to promote homeownership specifically. So these aren't rentals. And basically, they're nonprofit, they own the property. They develop housing on top of it. That housing is sold at an affordable rate and they do that through grants and by taking out the cost of the land itself. But, and they, with the homeowners, sign a 99-year lease. In that 99-year lease, there are stipulations on resale. And so what that allows people to do is rather than pay 750 bucks for rent, they're paying it towards a mortgage and building equity. And the idea being that you're actually getting people who wanna be part of the community, allowing them to build equity and build wealth and hopefully then move into the next sort of set of housing and then free it up for the, you know, minimum wage folks or and so like Bend has been doing this to address a lot of their nursing and like teacher housing. And Portland has a longstanding one that, like I looked at what they're selling houses for. It's kind of amazing that they can do that in Portland. So anyways, I've been kind of, Kayla and Lane actually was the one who suggested we maybe look into it. Because the thing I like about it, what we keep stumbling upon on the housing development is nobody wants to own it, nobody wants to manage it. The nice thing about the land trust model is it, the individuals actually own the home. And then they're able to get equity out of it when they go to sell it, but they're not, it's not speculative. You can't turn it around and make buku bucks on it, because there's stipulations in the lease that say, in the land lease that underlies it. So it's an interesting concept.
So how are all these other communities building big apartment complexes?
Question?
They're everywhere. And they're going up, Bend in particular, one after another, but every place you go, there's a big apartment complex.
I mean, part of it, I think if the developer sees that there's a demand that's high enough and they can charge whatever they need to clear their costs and, yeah, yeah, well, I think part of it is work, I think, for better or worse, catching up on housing prices, but if you're a contractor and you can build a house for $500,000 up the road and you can only build one that you can reasonably sell here for 250, you're gonna build the same house for 500,000, I mean, it's math. So I think that we're still suffering a little bit from that.
Yeah, one of the really strange deals I heard recently was there's a lot of developers coming out of the Boise area to build in Monroe County, which means they make more money in Monroe County than they can in that Boise area, and that's hard for me to fathom.
That port.
It's been such a growing, booming area for years.
So anyway, I wanna do a little bit more research on it, but it may be a viable, again, it would be like a new nonprofit, but they would be very focused on this sort of land trust model. And it may potentially, I haven't talked to Catherine about it, but it may be a potential solution to their fairway, uh, fairway housing and trying to figure out how to make that affordable, but not really wanting to own it. So that may be a viable additional partner on housing, slightly different than what I think this group would be working on. But anyway, wanted to let you guys know that I'm doing some research. Okay, let's move into five point two, which is Gillon County Public Health Update. Daylene is on. Daylene, Leah, which one of you wants to take this one? She's, she's on. Okay.
Good morning. I always like it when Leah takes the lead on this.
I like it when you take it.
I'll give you the highlights. I think you guys probably have the, the paperwork I put together, but first and foremost, we survived our first year. And I will say, I feel like the first half went better than the second half. The second half has definitely been a little bit more of a struggle for me and a test, but but we got through it and we're doing well. Let's see, other highlights, I know, well, I guess one of my questions for you guys is on all of the IGAs. I know you've been through those and sorted through those, but we have one or two new ones that will be coming through to you. And one of those is the Oregon Mothers Care. That's PE 42-12. And then we'll get an updated IGA for the modernization funds and the changes that are coming with those. And I'm just curious if you guys have seen those new IGAs to sign or the updated information with those?
We have not.
Okay, okay. I don't, I don't have, that I can think of off the top of my head, at least. Ideas or, you know, I don't know when they'll be sending those over, but I would guess that it will be. ideas or, you know, I don't know when they'll be sending those over, but I would guess that it will be soon. Um, so, yeah, the Oregon Mothers Care, we got a little bit of funding for it last year, and that was just to kind of help us explore whether or not that was a program we wanted to, um, utilize and implement here um, with the other, um, maternal child adolescent health programs and what programs, it, it seems to fit in pretty flawlessly, so we made the decision to go ahead and add that one, and so we, um, we've been talking kind of with a lead at the state, and we'll have a little bit of training to undergo, but it won't be a whole lot. So that one's coming, and it's just mostly about referrals. Um, otherwise, gosh, these last couple of months have been reports, reports and more reports. Uh, end of the year, beginning of the new fiscal year, and then Leah and I spent a lovely day together yesterday. Um, working and sifting through all of the quarterly reports and figuring out, you know, how it was completed before and I, I think I'm feeling pretty good about what we did. I think we got them all done, so, um, I'm super appreciative of Leah being here to help me figure that out.
I know, I was super excited when we got done yesterday.
I went home and was kind of brain dead.
Yeah, me too. So, so Daylene, you wanna talk to him about the significantly more increased on the modernization funding?
Yeah, well, yeah, I I don't remember what the original amount was.
Well, last year was like fifty-five thousand or something, and I think we actually kind of budgeted for fifty-five, fifty-six for this coming year.
That sounds right, and so they've been working hard in legislation, trying to get the amounts increased for public health so that you know, all the new stuff that people have brought on with COVID, that they can continue to maintain that, cause those funds are running out, and so they had a huge success. And essentially, they, um, the base funding for every local public health authority is, um, four hundred thousand dollars. And then, you know, depending on population, poverty needs, there's a bunch of other things that are kind of taken into consideration and how they, um, you know, separate the funds out from county to county, but so we're getting, I wanna say it was like four hundred and thirty-ish thousand dollars off of that modernization fund. So that's over the next biennium for the next two years, so, um, that was, that, that's huge.
Congratulations.
It's a really big deal.
So I think that will help with some of their staffing at the county that, so, and help some staffing with Daylene too, as well, maybe.
Yes, that gets me the most excited, is getting a little bit of help over here.
Yeah, because you've been pretty much doing it yourself, and you've been doing a great job.
Thank you. We're working hard. Um, I certainly couldn't do it without you, Leah, so thank you for jumping in with both feet and, you know, being willing to help with whatever I ask.
Yeah, and then, then you're gonna do some promotion during the fair and too, so.
Yeah, last year, I know there was some confusion last year, I'm putting a booth together, um, so we are definitely in on this year, um, we'll be putting a booth um, for the fair, and then we are also going to, we're planning on doing a table for the children's fair as well.
Great. Good. So we'll plan then, I was just thinking from a, um, budgetary standpoint, we'll need to plan to do probably a supplemental for that amount of money that's coming in. And then it's forty-two twelve, is that already an existing program element? So it's just bumping up the amount, okay. Okay, come through probably very similar to all of those amendments we approved last year. I would imagine it'll just come through as fiscal agreement amendments. Got it, okay.
Yeah, I believe, I think we started off with the forty-two twelve, and then that program was kind of back and forth with us of like, you weren't supposed to, or we hadn't planned on getting those funds, and then we ended up getting the funds, and then they came back and said you shouldn't have gotten the funds, and everybody was very confused. Um, but that amount is gonna be a fairly minimal, I think it's twenty-five hundred dollars for the year, so it's, it's not a lot.
Got it, okay. They give us and take us away both.
Yes, they do.
Um, any questions for Daylene on public health, any from the public or, or commissioners?
Good job, Leah and Daylene.
Yay, good job getting all those reports in, that's fun.
I've been trying to keep the other heat off you, cause I knew you were busy.
Yeah, it's been a learning curve for me, I'll tell you that. Daylene is a wealth of knowledge, I'll just say that, so. Yeah, we are.
All right, we'll see you next time, Daylene.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we're moving into five point three, which was added, uh, this is regarding the road internship wage, Pat.
Well, quite frankly, I don't know where we're at, um, that's kind of why I pulled it off the agenda of the minutes, cause I think we had a depth, a more in-depth discussion about where we're gonna head. Had a consensus from the court, and now I don't know that it's headed in that direction. We have three employees that are expecting to get paid eighteen dollars an hour. And I don't know how you back out of that, and I think we need to come up with a solution on that moving forward.
Well, was, was he supposed to do a job description and bring back?
Yeah, the feedback I've been getting from Miranda is that that doesn't make any sense, because you have to open it up to public for everybody to apply. Part-time position, by the time they get through that, they're gonna be done working.
With the summer.
For the summer help, and so even though that's what we had agreed to do, behind the scenes, it looks like that's not a good option.
Not a viable. Was this feedback from CIS, when we ran it by them?
But it was going forward, so we don't, so we do not end up in the same boat next year at this time?
Fix this and treat those employees fairly. I don't think it's fair for them to work all summer for eighteen dollars an hour, and then we end up paying thirteen. I don't know how you do that. I sure will not vote to do that. I, I, I realize you made a commitment, I, you know, I, I think there was some, I got some phone calls about some of the verbal language that was used in the last meeting, and I think when I think back about it, that I don't believe that, that our roadmaster doctor died in policies or procedures, I think he didn't read an email. And he assumed that that's your base rate, that that program's gonna use, he was gonna be able to continue doing what he always did. Like, we pushed that truth past, and I think I missed, I don't know that I missed it, I just wasn't aware of what, how we've been doing in the past, and it didn't come to the table. And, uh, it, it should have probably been part of the discussion, the one we done, I, I mean, it, it is what it is, we need to fix it. And I would suggest that we handle like we have in the past. This year and moving forward, we'll correct it.
Well, I don't have, I, I, I realize that he made that promise to him, and I don't have a problem with paying him the eighteen dollars, because he promised him that. But I, that, I believe that extra should come out of his budget. And if it, it better not come back next year, because if it comes back next year, looking the same way as it this year, they'll be getting thirteen seventy or whatever the price is for next year.
I think we're all aware of that issue now.
Okay, yeah, cause I had no idea when, that any of this was going on, until he walked in and sat down in front of us, so.
Well, Delaney and I have been talking about trying to figure out how to get through it, so. Yeah. I mean, in defense of what he did, he didn't do anything different than he's done any other year. You know, and I, and I realize he didn't read the email or whatever, he did not get that memo, whatever you wanna say. Ignored it if you wanna say that, but I don't believe that. So.
Feel ignorance is bliss?
Well, not necessarily, but it's, it's, that's not who, that's not who I'm concerned about. I, like I said before, I've been in management positions for fifty years almost. And I have never seen ever an employer promise a wage to somebody and then go back and pay them less. I don't know how you can do that. And he's been making that same promise to him for, I don't know how long, at least last year. And then the other thing is, you got one of those employees is making fifteen bucks a lot, and you wanna break them back to thirteen, twenty. And the liability, as far as I could see with CIS is internally, and we're looking at about three other employees in the.
So.
So, and, and basically, that's what I said, I, I don't disagree that they shouldn't get eighteen dollars an hour. I'm just upset about the process and how it came about.
Yeah.
And I, if it comes back the same, looking the same way next year, it'll be a big fat no then. So I moved to pay the road department internship wage at eighteen dollars an hour, as promised by the Dwyane Kennedy, the roadmaster.
True, the balance being paid through his part.
Yes. With anything above thirteen.
Are we backdating it to June first? When are we starting this eighteen dollars now?
I think we have captured.
That was a commitment that was made.
So do you want me to rephrase it again?
Are you gonna type it out? We're just making sure we got everything captured in there, so that when we go to instruct a few people that we have it, have it documented.
And I, I like, I don't know how they did that last year, but.
So last year, for context, well, Delaney's writing that out. By the time we caught it, because these kids started in July, it was already the end of the summer, and there was no way to fix it, basically, and so this year, the approach was that the departments were notified like forty-five days before any of the kids would have been made job offers to tell them the court will be setting the wage, it's coming through these line items, you are not to hire them separate from this. And so I think my frustration is, I am frustrated when a member of our staff who is communicating with the department head says, this is what the court decided. And that staff member decides to do something that is contrary to what the three of us decided collectively was going to be the policy.
I don't, I don't know that you can look at it that way. I think we set the program at thirteen, twenty, but that didn't mean the wages were set at thirteen, twenty.
How could it not be, Pat?
Cause they're not consistent throughout the program running. We have employers that are paying more than that.
But we are not employing them. So the difference is, every person who works for Gilmun County, the three of us decide how much that person gets paid. We set the pay scale. If they are issued a Gilmun County paycheck, it is only the three of us, otherwise, we would have department heads who would just decide, I like my person, so I'm gonna give them a raise this year. There's a reason why the three of us are the check and balance on those directors, because otherwise, they could just pay whatever they want, and that gets us into all kinds of legal trouble on pay equity. So for our folks that are, kids that are working in different departments, those are not our employees. Basically, what we say to the employer is, we're gonna cut you a check for minimum wage amounts and this number of hours, and your relationship with that person is none of, technically, really none of our business beyond that. You're gonna follow bully, you're gonna make sure that you're legally meeting all your requirements in terms of payroll taxes. But other than that, if you wanna employ them all, all year, and have it come out of your, you know, bottom line, that's fine. You wanna pay them more than what we're offering, that's fine, but they're not our employees. We're just offering that as a grant to each of these businesses to be able to employ some of you. And so that, I think that's for me is the difference, and I really.
So it's just we're running two separate programs.
We are, exactly are, yeah. They come out of different line items in the budget. And the ones, if they have a Gilmun County paycheck, that Ellen cuts them, those wages are set. And I, I really worry about the, the precedence of having a director overrule the county court and make job offers that we explicitly told him.
There, he's not, because it's in front of the county court today to make a decision. And, and that's a vote here.
Yeah, but the reason it's the board is.
It's a one-time deal, and I do not believe there's a pay equity, much of a pay equity risk when there's maybe six employees in Hope County you're talking about. And I talked to CIS, and they agreed that there is legitimate reason for a difference in the, in the wages based on the jobs at different departments. But that's an argument.
I mean, that's potentially an argument, but I don't know. I mean, some of the things that the kids are doing is sweeping out the shop. Do I think that's any more technical than what Thelma and Shaw's doing, you know, where she's helping with four different departments in the county and helping them get, I mean, if we're gonna do this, why don't we give all of them eighteen?
That's what I said, I don't care if there's any risk in and potential risk, and I mean, we've made a, a commitment to those three, and if that's what we're concerned about.
Yeah, but my, my concern is that we are paying them different wages. And again, like my, my underlying concern honestly, is I don't like it when department heads make decisions that are this county court's responsibility to make. And when this county court makes decisions and we have somebody decide that they're just gonna not do what we have instructed them to do, and then we have to go back and clean up the mess. Cause as you know, this is not the first time we've had to clean up the mess in that department. So.
And, and I, I can speak to that too, because the I will speak to that, because the verbal communications in public media were probably not appropriate either. Could have been backdoored through the supervisor, and, and I just feel like I didn't understand um, all the details when I made the initial decision, and I wanna fix this.
Okay. I moved to approve the wage for the road department interns at eighteen dollars per hour with the excess funding to come from the road department budget starting June first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Can I get that? It, it's been moved and seconded that we approved the wage for the road department interns at eighteen dollars per hour with the excess funding to come from the road department budget, starting June first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Bye. All those opposed, I, uh, motion carries. Okay, absolutely, for the minute. Okay, let's move on to the next one, um. Six point one is consider award a fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, cycle two, capital investment grant. Delaney, do you wanna take this one?
I'll happily take this one. Uh, we received one capital investment grant in time for our second cycle. And that is from the Content Early Learning Center. They, this is for their expansion project that we have talked about in county court previously. And so they are asking for, let's see, one point seven million dollars to but fully fund their project. Um, part of the reason they're asking for the funding is, is explained in their grant application, that they are actively chasing other funders. And a lot of those other funders are hesitant to commit to the project if they don't see that the project will, will happen, or that there's other large funders in place. Um, so the Grant Review Committee, Committee met on July nineteenth, and we discussed for our recommendation for approval is to approve funding of up to a million dollars guaranteed. Um, and then to place a hold on the additional seven hundred thousand dollars until Content Early Learning Center has heard back from its other grant applications. Um, in order to access that gap funding, that seven hundred thousand, that, uh, Content Early Learning Center would need to submit a request to the county court detailing the status of the project with an updated budget, and then the county court could approve um, that extra amount. And so they are actually, so they're actively chasing it. Their goal is to not need that extra seven hundred thousand, that is their intention. Um, but if they do need it, they would be able to still access it in order to make the project happen. But they're chasing several large grants from Ford Family Foundation, Oregon Community Foundation, Roundhouse, USDA, um, and several others. USDA and several others.
So I'm having a little trouble with the million seven. And, and where are we at with federal funding for daycare and is it out there two years on? Uh, legislation that's been passed and we're gonna be able to come along. We're getting the cart out of the horse before there's some other funding available.
I mean, the state, so the state passed this last legislative session, a childcare fund. To help provide funding for infrastructure. Um, I'm not sure on the timing. I think it's twenty-two million that they approved. I believe that's for the biennium. Um, which is, sounds like a lot, will not go far. If you think that this expansion in Condon alone is two million dollars to add three classrooms. And literally every county in the state has a shortage of childcare facilities, uh. Like, we potentially are looking at. The possibility of being able to compete for those funds because it's shovel ready. It's already been approved by planning. I mean, it's ready to go basically since the money is, um, in place and a contractor is identified. Uh. So, uh. It's a large amount. There's no doubt about that. But I would also say like for the parents right now that are sitting on the waitlist and unable to take jobs here. For anybody who's thinking about moving in, if we have, uh, potentially. Companies that want to invest here and are wondering how their workforce is gonna be able to find a place to. Um, cause what I am thinking ultimately long term is we're also gonna be needing to probably build a center in Arlington. Um, and the state money may actually be on a timeline that fits better for the Arlington Center. Um, than for Condon.
So what, what do we know or do we know anything about what's in the? Um, federal packages.
So, um. The infrastructure dollars that are coming down. I don't know if there's childcare funding in there. I think we'd have to go in and actually look. Um, my understanding is a lot of it was focused on broadband. Um. I think there's some road and bridge funding that's coming down. Um, I'm not sure. How the. Childcare funding, if there is any childcare funding, how that would even be accessed. I don't think it's coming like. Like the broadband funding is going to the state and the state distributes it. I'm not sure what. The other infrastructure dollars, how those are gonna look and the state's gonna have control over a pie that then they create rules and then we go compete against. Other counties or if we have to try to navigate a federal. System, which is obviously much more complicated usually when we have to try to do that.
Money on the table because we get. You know what I'm saying?
And I think that's why the grant committee is recommending approving up to the million and then just holding that seven hundred thousand if they need it.
Seven hundred thousand, million, I'm just, it's a lot of money and I just, I just, you know, I've heard. Language that there's. You know, looking at childcare.
I think timelines on that are what's pressing. This project could start this spring. If the funding is secured because that is a goal they would like to be up and running by fall next year. With these additional classrooms. And so I think that's what to weigh out here is if we.
Well, the one thing I can buy into because I do believe Arlington is gonna have to do the same thing that it's gonna be difficult for Gillon County to access. Funding for two centers in a community this size, no matter where it comes from.
And I think actually the one in Ar- I mean, the one in Arlington is gonna be more because Condon is starting with a. Basically new building that they're just adding on to. So they already have. Two classrooms and a cafeteria and all kinds of stuff that was already previously funded.
And potentially they need to be much larger.
Yeah, Arlington. Looking a couple of years down the road, knowing what Condon spent on its first one, adding inflation and what Jeff thinks this one's gonna come in. It would not surprise me if, if a center here in Arlington would be four or five million. A comparable to what Condon has. So. I would suggest that we not hold off on this project waiting for those funds to come. I mean, I think. Part of the reason, and I want like in full disclosure, daughter Ainsley goes to school there. I'm as a parent volunteering, helping them kind of navigate and raise funds for this. And in general, what we find from like Ford Family and all of those other like pretty large funders. Is they wanna see fifty percent of the cost guaranteed before they're even gonna talk to you about providing funding. And so part of the issue is nobody wants to be the first dollar in.
So can you guarantee those funds without? I mean, just guarantee that they're until you get to that process or not. I mean, we would get them back if they got.
And that's why like it's guarantee up to a million, so promise, but if they don't need the full million or they don't. Then they, they can use less than that. And then that they, in order to access the above that.
Basically what you're saying is highly unlikely that.
Yeah.
They're gonna get.
Another million from. Yeah, I think that. If they come back, I think they'll probably utilize the million from us minimum. And then I'm hopeful that based off of how. Aggressively they're chasing other dollars that they won't have to access that other seven hundred. And if they do have to access any portion of it. That has to come back before the court for final approval. So we hold the funds, but the intention is that they don't have to use those funds and potentially maybe not even the full million. If they are able to get enough other funders to come in.
Part of it too is like we're still operating under Jeff's cost estimate. So it is also possible that a contractor will come in. For a smaller bid than what we're, I mean, we're just, this is like what we thought would be the maximum amount so that we're not, we don't have any surprises if there's something that goes sideways.
So in the motion, it doesn't really. I mean, I understand the agreement will reflect. But in the mo- in the motion, it doesn't really reflect that they have to come back to the court for the seven hundred thousand. I'm assuming it'd be in the agreement, but.
That'll be captured in the, I, I guess this is how it was the motion that we've done previously when we've done recommendations. For the court and so the grant committee's recommendation that is, is what you would be approving as presented. Is that recommendation? So we can rephrase the motion.
Yeah, I can, you want me to?
I move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four cycle to investment grant award recommendations.
As presented.
Or as recommended by the grant committee. I'll say it. I'll go.
Hang on, hang on just a minute. So in. In this, it says gap funding. Heard back from the grant application. There's more access to gap funding. Been a request to county court, okay.
Yeah. And in terms of me, context, it does. It seems like a lot of money. Totally get that.
Oh, we got it.
Yeah, we have it. We put plenty in there to accommodate this.
And then if you look, just that we can see where the fund is currently at. On this sheet that's attached that after we funded our first cycle, there's three point nine left. So if this one is approved, there would still be two point two left in that fund.
Yeah, I know we budgeted and I, and I know we need it, if not, I'm just.
It's a lot.
Good Lord.
But I also tell folks like when we had the pool open to everyone, we would write about that amount to our school districts just to maintain their buildings every year. Without adding new services. This one, we're gonna allow multiple families who've been waiting on waitlists, um. To actually have their kiddos have consistent care, which, um. I mean, there's gonna be a lot of happy, I think, people who can finally go to work full time. And do things that they haven't been able to do without having. Care for their kids.
You made it a little easier to swallow.
It's a nice thing.
You have my commitment on my end as the volunteer parent that's working to get all these funds that we're gonna chase every dollar.
Piece of language I didn't like how the conversation was if. They aggressively approach. They need to.
Are aggressively approaching. Their application lists all of their aggress- their funders and all of that stuff. So, and, and since I will be doing a lot of that chasing, um, I can assure you that I will be chasing a lot of dollars for them.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, I move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four cycle two capital investment grants. Award as recommended by the grant committee. And to authorize county judge to finalize and execute the grant agreements reflecting the same.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty, or twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, sorry. Cycle two capital investment grant awards as recommended by the grant committee and to authorize the county judge to finalize and execute grant. Uh, grant agreement, what requesting the same. Is there further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
And then just, I do have one application already. I received another one on Monday for another capital investment grant. So probably August sixteenth, we will have cycle three. So if you have anyone out there who is potentially submitting an application. We wanna get those in as quickly as possible so you can be considered for the August sixteenth court meeting. Um, just feel free to email me with any questions.
We have some potential housing ones out there. So this is just like a heads up to those of you who are thinking. Like best not to sit on that because a big. Another big project that comes in could take up a pretty good chunk of what's left in the account. So. Come CS if you have a project. Okay, let's move on to six point two. Consider approval resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash twelve, adopting a background check policy and procedure. Miranda, do you wanna take this one or do you want me to do it?
Either way. Um, I can start.
Okay.
So, um, uh, April twenty twenty, then county court adopted a policy, background check policy. Um, and we've been doing our annual reviews on all policies. So this one was the next one to be reviewed. Um, and it did have the old version draft has the staffing. To go to the chief of staff. So we switched that. And then as we've been changing our policies within the courthouse on the hiring process and. Trying to funnel the whole process through employee resource officer position. We updated that. Um, so.
Yeah, so the issue that we've run into previously, so folks, that context is. Before, so the general processes as somebody's applying, they have to fill out a release form, assuming they're the final candidate. Uh, the sheriff's office does the initial background check for us. Um, but then it was going back to the hiring manager and if there was a problem. Like. Chris doesn't necessarily, it isn't telling us exactly what the problem is. We actually have to go into DMV and figure out. What, you know, if there's a driving issue or something like that. Um, sometimes those follow-up checks weren't happening. Um, because the managers didn't know where to go with it. And so. We just decided because Miranda is consistently onboarding and making sure all the paperwork is good. That those are gonna come, those, that's gonna be a transaction between Miranda and the sheriff's office directly. So Miranda will give them the form. Chris will run the check or Jolie potentially. I think when Jolie is trained, it'll come back to Miranda. If there's any follow-ups, Miranda will make sure all those follow-ups happen. So that we don't have somebody coming through who. Uh, Chris is flagged as a potential problem and we haven't run all the checks to make sure that there's not an issue that we need to be aware of. So. This is just kind of tightening that up and then fixing because there was a reference to the chief of staff in several places, making sure that it's clear who's actually responsible for what. Otherwise, it's pretty straightforward, really, yeah.
I move to approve the resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash twelve as presented.
Second.
So moved and seconded that we approved resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twelve as presented. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, six point three is consider approval of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, establishing a wellness policy. Which one of you wants to take this?
I can start. I kinda started this. So CIS offers grant funding opportunities to, um, cities and counties. Who have a wellness policy in place. Um, there's various levels of funding that are awarded through the grant. Some are as small as five hundred dollars. Some can be more for projects like upgrading, um, to ergonomic equipment for staff. Um, instituting like a wellness activity for the staff, things like that. And so having the wellness policy allows us to be able to apply for those grants. Without the wellness policy, we're ineligible for them. So it's a quick. Policy to just kind of allow us to be able to maybe do some things in the courthouse and get some additional funding for them, for staff.
And we can apply for these annually. So when we review this, then it can go along with our application.
So we're, and we're eligible every year. So every time the insurance renewal happens, we're eligible to apply for another round of wellness grants.
So this will like would help with like stand for standing desk.
Possibly.
Other employees wanted.
Projects like that, um, simple projects, like if we wanted to do like a staff activity. Um, for earning wellness or a training about mental health or things like that, that these grants can be used for those sort of things. And this grant, uh, the wellness committee will be captured with the safety committee. So that way we don't have to have a separate committee. So safety and wellness cur- will just fall under the current safety committee.
Questions about that one?
Well, so the requirement for elected officials, and obviously that can't be enforced, but, um. Is it? Is there for grant, to receive grants, percentage of employees that need to?
It's, yeah, just, and, and even for employees, it's just encouraging them to participate. There's no requirement that all of them participate. So.
Yeah, I think in here, like typically, you're exactly right, like elected officials. Um, this is definitely a voluntary, but in this particular case, it's voluntary for everybody and they can choose to participate.
As an elected official, it's only a part-time. FTE, it's hard to.
You are not required to do, are you worried about being required to do wellness activities?
Well, you know, I don't, I don't mind trying to, but still it's, you know, sometimes it's.
Yeah.
Hard to get the time.
Yeah, yeah. You're eligible though. So if you would like to work on something after a bull runs over you.
I'm afraid the wellness program will tell me not to judge you on road.
I'm thinking when I attend the health district meetings, I probably should just be getting on one of the stationary bikes and riding it during the meeting.
It's a good. Okay, any questions for Miranda or Delaney on this one?
No, I move to approve resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash thirteen as presented.
Second.
So moved and seconded that we approved resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirteen as presented. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, six point four is consider approval of resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. Adopting a revised fee schedule for environmental health services. Delaney, do you want to take this one?
Yes, so Joseph, um, with Yumitala County Public Health reached out to me with the updated fee schedule. That the Yumitala County Board of Commissioners has approved for environmental health services. Um, it's requirement in our IGA with them that we adopt the same fee schedule. And so I have gone through and I updated it based off of what Joseph had sent me. Um. It looks like this right now, but once we, if, if these are approved, I will go ahead and remove the strike-throughs. So it'll just show what the new fee is, but I just wanted to leave them in there so we could all look at what the fees are. And so it's, yeah, it's just a requirement.
So did they, they just move, remove those? You so. Not-for-profit license that.
Pass-throughs from the businesses, right?
Yeah, these are all fees to the businesses. Um, what they will be charged for all of this, all of their services.
Yeah, we don't ever see, even see these.
No, we, um, on the report that Joseph submits to us, our annual report, it shows how many of each of these things that they do. Uh, and they don't do all of them for us. Like I don't think we have very many vending machines that have, you know, forty-one to fifty units. So there's some of it that I just don't.
Do they even have a vending machine?
Looks like, yeah, it looks like not very many have over a hundred because they reduced all the costs.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Or over fifteen hundred and one.
Yeah, I would like, that would be a lot of the new machine to have in a place of business, so.
Yeah. Questions or concerns for Delaney? I mean, I don't know that we really have.
We don't really have a choice, do we?
Unless we wanna try to figure out how to do environmental health.
No, we don't.
Now, so.
No, no. I will read the much.
Delaney, yeah.
I'm like.
He is like, no. I'm not doing that.
Okay, um, I'm on move to approve resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash fourteen as presented.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash fourteen as presented. Is there further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Six point five is consider approval of modification to city of Condon fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three special projects grant agreement. Delaney, I'll let you do this one too, please.
So we received a request from the city of Condon to modify one of their special projects grants they received last fiscal year. Um, we already approved modifying it once during the March fifteenth meeting. Um, this was originally supposed to be for the heating system at the Condon grade school play shed. Instead, we allowed, modified it to be used. Instead, we allowed, modified it to be used for memorial hall improvements. Um, they have completed their memorial hall improvements and the total cost for those improvements is less than they were budgeting for. So the city has requested that the excess funds be used to make repairs at the Condon Community Swimming Pool. Um, there's a couple of things, I believe there is a water heater and, uh, the gutters that needed to be fixed. Um, I recommend that we approve this modification, um, that this county already makes an investment into the community swimming pool. And so I think it would be a great way to give them, city some additional support to keep that operating because it is very busy and it is very much appreciated that we have that in our community. And then our financial people don't have to worry about taking money back from the program.
We're like how they used it in a couple of different places, so.
The, the original grant was fifteen thousand or.
It was twenty thousand. And so they've only used about fifteen, they, they'll only have, be able to use about, um, fifteen of that.
I was a little confused in the math because in the seventy-five percent or twenty-five percent match, wasn't that what I saw?
Mm-hmm. And so they've only used, so their match would be, if they only are able to use X number, their match would be reduced. So they would have to return more money.
I think I'm still confused on the math, but I get the concept. I, because, because the grant agreement shows twenty and the, um, the June briefing shows fifteen.
That's what they, what, what they've currently done for memorial hall improvements, they've only done fifteen thousand. So there's that remaining. Right, Catherine?
So the total project cost was going to be about twenty-six or twenty-seven thousand. And so to, to take the match, we've already received twenty of thousand, which is seventy-five percent of our ask. So by adding the gutters and the, um, new, uh, tankless hot water heater, we're going to get up to twenty-seven thousand. And so then our, we'll spend the whole seventy-five percent match of twenty, or the, our match is twenty-five percent, about seven.
Okay, I'm.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I was just, I guess I did the math, twenty to fifteen was seventy-five percent of our.
No, it's just the, the match.
Yeah, the total project was more.
Yep.
We've actually received twenty K.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I move to amend fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three special projects grant award to the city of Condon by authorizing the grant funds to be used for the memorial hall and the Condon Swimming Pool improvements and to authorize the county judge to prepare and execute an amended grant agreement reflecting the same.
I will second and thank Commissioner Lo, Lo, for making all the motions today.
It's been moved, Dan.
Moving it along.
Yeah, amendment fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three special projects grant award to the city of Condon by authorizing the grant funds be used for memorial hall and the Condon Swimming Pool improvements and authorize the Condon Judge, the county judge to prepare and execute an amended grant agreement reflecting the same, that was a mouthful, is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, six point seven is, uh, he has been waiting patiently, this is the discussion regarding the salvage request from Wayne Standiford. Uh, Leah, you want to take this one?
Okay, so I, uh, received the following email from Wayne. And then I asked Wayne if he would please join us by Zoom, which he has, so he can explain further, because I have no idea where this line is or what's going to be involved in getting it out, so Wayne? Wayne?
Yeah, I'm muted, but I don't hear him.
Well, I'll read his letter while we're waiting for him to come on, it says, um, good morning. Uh, who do I need to talk to about salvaging some copper wire that is still buried in conduit at the courthouse? This wire was an old service feed that was replaced about twenty-five years ago when we rewired the courthouse. It is a good sized wire and I'm sure it can be removed, but the ends are sticking out of the ground at the bottom of the transformer poles that feed the courthouse. I would like to give it a shot and see if the wire can be recovered, thanks Wayne, so, um.
He's up there, I don't know, is your audio working, Wayne?
He didn't, he said he was not sure if it could be removed, not sure that it could be removed.
Yeah. Because we can see you, we just can't hear you. I'm wondering. I wonder if I can call him and have him on. You can try it.
Anyone speaker?
Leah's going to try to give you a call, Wayne, real quick and see if we can just have you patch through on her cell phone.
Oh, this is working, the phone is.
We can see you, so now we can hear you on the phone, Wayne, go ahead.
Right, okay, appreciate it, um. So the question, I guess, is value?
Value and profit.
Cross and process, yeah, but there's like a three thousand dollar over above on what we can.
Right. Um, I, I estimate five hundred to a thousand, maybe as high as fifteen hundred if, um, copper prices are good.
Then where, where does it start?
It's over to transformer pole, I tried to, I've got a picture, but I couldn't put it on chat. But I think the judge has a picture that Darryl was going to take, take to her.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it's just sticking out of the ground about a foot in conduit.
And where's the other end?
Oh, it's up by the, the new service connection somewhere, um, I can't remember where we actually cut it off. But if it doesn't come easy, I'll just leave it, but I think with a chain hoist, it'll come up.
So if you guys are okay, I just wanted to make sure, because this was kind of an interesting request, so.
It's under the three thousand and you can okay it.
Yeah, and if it's under three thousand, we can just, basically there's a little form that Miranda, uh, creates for me and then I just, so we can say where it went, wonder if we do need to have some sort of like, if, if a damage happens while the copper wire is being removed, like what, who covers that and how does that work, just in case, not that anything would happen, but it's.
Oh, Delaney, you and your risk management.
I'm sorry.
Well, to be honest, I don't have a stick of insurance, but like I said, if it don't come right up, I'm going to back off, but I, I can't see any damage being done.
I don't have a problem with it. I didn't even know it was there, so.
Yeah, I've been there, uh, twenty-five, thirty years and I just happened to remember about it, so I thought we should probably try and recover it.
How does your memory work at your age? Mine doesn't work that good.
Well, I, I wear, uh, my name on my belt, so I know who I am in the morning.
Okay, so it, it sounds like the consensus of the court is to allow that, so, um, and we actually don't need to do a motion because the policy allows me to do that, um, so. So what we'll do, Wayne, is Delaney and my office will get everything drafted and then, um, and there's nothing for you to sign, I, I just need to sign it basically, and then Delaney will notify you once I've signed it and then feel free at that point, so we'll, we'll try to get that turned around this.
Before I struggle too hard with it.
Yeah, we'll try to get, uh, we'll actually see if we can maybe get that turned around this week, um, and then that'll give you some flexibility.
Sure.
All right, thanks Wayne.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, so we'll move forward with that. Uh, last thing on the agenda is six point seven, discussion regarding Creo strategic plan and SIP presentation, Catherine, you want to take this one?
Yeah, I just, we talked and we, we had their board meeting and then went into strategic plan, um, discussion in executive session after that and uh, one of the questions specifically was what does Gillon County want from Korea moving forward within their strategic plan, and I thought it would be appropriate to ask the rest of the court if they have any input on that, I know that it was kind of designed around purpose and that hasn't been in real effective use, but they haven't, that's not what we've really been doing for quite some time. And some examples, and Jed can speak to some of this too, because he attends most of their meetings, is there's a, there's a lot of outside um, benefit, I think, to what Creo does, they're really involved in the Cascade Renewables project, which is increased transmission, installed in the Columbia River and they're working with McCann on grant, um, process for, McCann's doing actually the grant work for them. Uh, through Korea with great support, um, for Cascade Renewables on that project, which is a huge, huge thing, um, moving renewables forward in the future. Please, uh, Mike has brought a couple of presentations to the Korea board and, uh, with people from Cascade Renewables, talking about that project, how it works, where they do it elsewhere in the world, how it's been successful, so. That's one example, and I think Korea's been real supportive with whether support for the grant process for, um, Obsidian Renewables and a hydrogen hub in Yumitala County, Austin, Oregon, or state of Washington to do a joint hydrogen hub in the Pacific Northwest and we're still in the game on that, there'll probably be some information about that by the end of the year, but um, Korea's been really at the forefront of helping Obsidian along, support that project and trying to get it to come into Oregon and so I think there's a lot of benefit um, that I see because I attend all the board meetings and part of all the presentations and it's been extremely um, educational for me, learning about all this renewable energy stuff that's going on in the world today. I do, an example is I had no idea, would not know, had I not been to a Creo board meeting, that there's I don't know, ten thousand cars in California running on hydrogen and fifty thousand forklifts in the United States and that kind of information has been kind of usable when you start talking about hydrogen and um, that it is a viable option for where we're headed with, uh, decarbonization, so. Anyway, I just, if you had any ideas about what you thought, because the hurdle for, for Korea is going to be, if you don't know, and I know Liz does, but uh, we talked about a little bit the other day, is they are funded, basically funded through the SIPs agreements with Sherman Morrow and Gillon County and Gillon County has been the highest funder for some time. And this year it's a hundred and eight thousand, where the other two are down, I think one was at fifty and one's at thirty or twenty or something, so we are the primary funder of created a day and they will not, that will not be sustained long-term with the Twilighted SIPs agreements. That funding will go away and so they're going to, you know, within their strategic plan, um, how will they be funded in the future and you know, what, you know, I mean, obviously if it runs up against the brick walls, the county or the counties that are involved, and there are other counties now that are, are on the board and participate that aren't contributing more than a minimal membership fee. Like Lake County and Kirk County and um, some of those that, um, really aren't, I mean, there's a lot more fair way to do membership in the future, but just for information, we are the primary funder of Korea today.
And I would say, I mean, my feedback, my frustration when I was on the board was that they were really at that time, that was before Mike MacArthur came on or kind of in its transition, and so it may have changed with under him. But there was a really heavy focus on participating at the Oregon P U C related to purple legislation for those, this is a really, like, I, I, I'm going to give you like the high level of what that is, but it is based, it's for the major, um, energy suppliers, like say the P G and E's and those, there's requirements that they are including a certain number of, uh, or a certain amount of renewable uh, community.
Small scale.
Small scale developers in that and and the P G and E's of the world believe like they shouldn't have to do that, and so they're constantly fighting the little guy over these big guys about how much energy needs to be taken and at what rate. Whereas P G and E would just rather build all of its own solar things or deal with like an average grid that's doing large scale stuff. So, um, but my contention has always been, we don't have small scale developers here, all of our folks are big guys. And so why is Gillon County paying for an industry that does not exist here? Um, and that is not really going to move them like mark, like mark for us at all, um. And even in Sherman County, I think they have one.
Yeah.
So they're contributing quite a bit for one developer, um, who's small scale, I think he has two windmills maybe.
And, and I would say that that focus has just gone away.
They're black, because I used to.
And there was a lot of discussion in the strategic plan on how much focus they even want to put on purpose going forward because it's been effective use of their resources and, 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 and all of my stuff that is, it's been around utility scale projects and, I mean, that's the stuff that I get from Korea is what he brings to the table around the big projects and the stuff that really will make a difference and there's been some, you know, some real good, there's enough developers on there and the, the developer problem is there's, uh, agendas are a little different, but they're also a lot the same. We're trying to do the same thing to get there. And even though you got to recognize what the developer agenda is and protect the counties and that's what Korea needs to do and that's what I think is the main focus is what can they do for the counties? And, you know, the, um, a lot of the developers are, you know, uh, uh, one in particular is real heavy on legislation enforcing kind of strong arm things in Salem and blah, 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 and all that stuff, but he looks at it strictly from the solar side, period. And for Gillon County, when we're looking at industry coming in that will outweigh anything you've ever done in renewable in the county. I would, I had the platform to explain to him that, no, I'm not voting for that, I'm not going to support that legislation because I know it was really around, um, uh, him trying to reduce the, the cost of, uh, uh, or the, the amount paid for the pilot program from seventy-five hundred to thirty-five hundred percent, ridiculous number, so, um, e- even those legislative, um, issues that come up, being able to weigh in on them, and I mean, we shut that down and that whole piece of legislation through Korea didn't go away, let the good stuff in and it passed.
So I mean, from where, like, looking at Mike's list that he sent over, the things to me that are the most meaningful, the siding stuff to me, um, because there's been some talk about medium range ones being able to come to county planning, I think there's some value in that. Um, because we do run into things, I mean, S C to their credit, I think their staff is starting to finally get, they need to be communicating with us.
But they're going to be overloaded going forward too.
Yeah, and there's some things that we can handle here, um, counties are equipped to handle some of these small, I mean, we're not going to do Montag Solar locally, I mean, that's too big of a project, but there's some mid, middle range ones that we can, um. And so I, I think that's a value, I think the tax incentives, but I would say actually on the county side because I, I know exactly what developer you're talking about and I, before, before I handed it over to you, sat in a meeting where he was trying to convince the board to vote basically to allow developers to come in and not have to pay local taxes um, as an incentive for them to invest here and how I almost lost my mind that we are spending a hundred and at the, at that time, a hundred and eighteen thousand a year of county dollars to advocate to hurt the county was like,
Yeah.
Like, yeah, I, I
Uh, just in.
Raise my voice that.
In that individual, it was recognized some that because he does try to contribute to legal fees with large amounts of money, that it's probably not a good thing for Korea because then he thinks he buys Korea to do, to push his agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'd be, that's recognized within the organization.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's tax incentives that would maybe take like an A O C approach where there is, um, like, the counties have the ability to figure out what's going to work locally and work with our taxing districts to figure out what's going to work for them. And so I, you know, I want to make sure, like, those incentives definitely, I mean, we have industry here that probably would not have been here if we didn't have SIPs and pilots and red zones and things like that. But as we just saw in our latest pilot, like, we need to be able to leverage and get things for the community when those things come in and so.
A lot easier to do now because the developers don't have the salesmanship power they once had.
Well, and I think like, honestly, this is a credit to this court, the two of you in particular for holding the line, um, counties called. Counties called us after we did that pilot agreement and asked how we did it. So there are other counties that are in negotiations with those big developers who are now thinking differently about how they use these tax incentives to. Address housing, to address things that they need in their community. In a way that they weren't before we did that, so. I wanna continue to see like Korea pushing for that flexibility at a local level. So that we can address things that we need to address when we have a developer coming in. And definitely pushing back on the, I mean, I think most of the developers get that they need to. Contribute to the community that they're investing in, but there are a few out there who think that. If they can cut a little bit off of. Uh, off of their tax bill to us, then that's no big deal. And so. Those ones, I think the BPA transmission stuff is. Significant for us because obviously our developers are saying this is a bottleneck, like, I'm not sure we're gonna get another big project in here until we get BPA. Actually committed to expanding energy. So the more we can move the needle on that, I think that's helpful, and then I think the hydrogen stuff and even the. The, uh, project that I think is still slated to go in across the river.
Yeah, the, the, um. They run into severe tribal issues. In fact, there was one of the board members for. Korea is with the Akamont tribe and even though the whole board was in. Favor supporting that, Mckev board was in favor of supporting that project, he spoke up very verbally how they were against affecting their food supply.
So it may not go anywhere.
Well, it's, you know, how much power they got.
So those are the ones like looking, the other thing that they had worked towards, I mean, this is something that maybe Commissioner Perkins out of Hood River. Had worked on was they had done a community resiliency project in Hood River. But I still, still think is of value to the counties, and so the idea is like, if we have. Say we had the internet outage that we had in Condon plus power supply was lost, how do you? Like, how do you have people being able to get gas? How do you like? Where are your essential services that you still need to operate and how do you come up with alternative? And so like some of the conversations we had when we talked with Brookfield about like, is there a? Joe's big, Judge Joe's big switch that he wants to have, like, could we have something like that where we know? That say Brookfield or one of our other renewables here, if the sheriff's office and emergency service buildings need power. And know that a generator is like great for the short term, but they're gonna need it for a long term need, like, is there a way to divert? Some of that power and have some resiliency for like emergency services and other things that we need. In the community, so I also think that's helpful. To, for Korea to play a role in helping communities access resources.
I think that some of that can be at the developer level, making sure the developers understand the importance of communities, how those things need to happen. Instead of being out there just building a big project, what can they step out and help you on these type of things to happen? I know, um, this end of the county is about to take, I've heard a forty percent power bill. Increase from Pacific Power, and it makes no sense that, um, I mean, we gotta really think about that as we're negotiating more of these deals is. All, we're generating all this energy in Gillon County and we're taking a forty percent increase is BS.
So that would be my feedback. I don't know how you feel, Leah.
Yeah.
So this is a new one.
Any help they can do and as long as we're on there speaking, their legislative. Support for things that are good for counties is. Their support on those kind of things is helpful because Mike knows how to get around down there pretty well.
Yeah. And there's potentially good synergy with AOC too, because a lot of those things are coming up through the.
And they're tying a better knot between the two of them that they've had in the past too.
That's. Fabulous, that was something I suggested once the. I'm glad, I'm glad that that was some of my feedback to Mike when he first came on board, I'm glad that. That he.
Sometimes there's some resistance just because of. ALC's reluctance to. Focus on certain counties and not other counties and.
True, but I also think that like, there's a lot of counties right now that would like to have developers come to them that are running into transmission issues or other. You know, like, so part of it is also laying the groundwork so that other counties can join in. And be part of, you know, have that industry go there, so. And. It's all being shipped to the counties who don't.
Exactly.
Produce it, so Portland, Walthoma, I mean, they, they all have an interest in us getting. Transmission and stuff down too, because they're, they're the users of the power that we're making.
Well, a lot of it, you're not gonna get big utility scale solar projects in the Alamo Valley. Um, and then the other thing that I, we done with that? The other thing was scheduling Mike to do, come in and do a SIP presentation, he did one for. And I, would you like me just to get his schedule and then? Do an agenda briefing, get him in to do that SIP presentation.
My thought was, what if we do like a, um, like a work session type of a thing, so it's during, probably like an evening meeting. We want to invite, um, the taxing districts to come, that might be more convenient.
And I think, I think the taxing districts should be important to be part of that.
Let's, maybe you and I can sit down and we'll coordinate some dates to set in with Mike and we'll get a, just a work session scheduled for the evening.
Be a lot of questions that come out on how all incentive programs work, but the SIP will have a real basis on how a SIP program works and.
Since most of our boards have. Daytime jobs, they may not wanna.
Okay. But you're the only one here, Joe.
I'll send it out, yeah, I'll, once we schedule it, I'll send it out, so I have a contact for all the taxing districts, I'll send it out, um, and agenda for that one. Great, anything else on that? Okay, let's move into announcements in next meeting, um, so next meeting, this is kind of an anomaly. So usually we meet the first and third Wednesday, as you all know, this is not the third Wednesday, it's the fourth Wednesday, and so we will not be having the first. August meeting, we kind of split the difference between the two, so our next meeting is actually not until August sixteenth. And that one will also be here. Um, and Pat, what do you got going on?
As far as meetings, I attended the city council meeting this month and for Arlington. Then the Korean meeting we just talked about on the fourteenth and North Core meeting last Thursday and. We did interviews. For the hiring of a business manager at Norcore, which is, it's kind of been structured around Molly Rogers and. And, uh, can't think of Brad's last name. Lowry, operating Norcore, running the business. Part of more core was Brad on the adult side, Molly on the juvenile side, and so they're looking for replacements so they can step back out of that. They kind of got, they changed the. Structure how Norcore operates, so now they're trying to put a business manager in to do what they've been doing the last couple of years. Had. Two pretty good applicants, one I thought was outstanding, I think a consensus of everybody was outstanding and they were moving forward with that. Other than that. That's what I've been doing, I'm not sure what I'm gonna be doing, I got rodeos for the next two weeks, so.
Fun time, try not to get hurt. Stay out of the way.
Part of your video. I don't think I wanna see the whole video, okay, Leah, what do you got going on?
So I just have been public health. Health district meetings, more public health.
We appreciate it.
I'm starting to look like an employee up there. They got their, um, application for the. Administrator all fine tuned and I think Miranda's gonna. Post it on the county website. And the Indeed site and then it'll be in the Times Journal, I believe, and so. There. Hopefully get some good candidates for that and get that person on board. So. And it's Rick's birthday today.
Happy birthday, Rick. Buried the lead.
He turned sixty-five.
Happy sixty-five.
I told him he's.
This may care.
Speed limit.
Um, let's see, so for me. What has happened, well. Delaney, do you wanna give a brief update on where we are on the enterprise zone?
Sure, that happened since our last.
Did, uh, so I have, uh, submitted our enterprise zone application, um, I heard back from Art Fish that he. Uh, wanted the GIS shake file, um, Michelle Colby was. Great, our planning director in helping me coordinate with Hurney County GIS to get us all of the maps and all of the square miles and all of those things to art and. Uh, I have received an email indication that our re-applicate designation application is approved. So we are waiting for final documentation. Um, but that should be coming shortly, so he has all the things they need to, to finish it out.
Perfect, good job on that.
So exciting.
I know it wasn't the most. Wasn't jaw.
It was, it was definitely a huge learning curve and there's still a lot more to come, um, on the enterprise zone with all the current state legislation that just changed. With House Bill two thousand nine, so it is just kind of. Gonna still be a little bit of a learning.
There's a company that's working in Salem right now, trying to figure out how to get its long-term enterprise zone. Designation and I'm trying to figure out why they want that more than SIPs.
Yeah, well, because the enterprise zone designation does not have the. Two hundred and fifty million dollar or two, twenty-five million, was it twenty-five or two hundred and fifty? It's twenty-five, yeah. So the, they're still paying, um, SIP, they have to pay on the first.
They have to pay on the first amount, whereas with the enterprise zone.
It's all tax free.
There is, uh, one.
For a certain amount of time.
Yeah, for, uh, three years and then it can be extended, but if you're a long-term rural, it gives you more flexibility into like ten to fifteen.
Yeah, so it's.
Tax free to hold.
Well, you get to negotiate upfront in lieu of that. Make that pretty lucrative.
Additional requirements now, like with a school fee that the legislation ha-passed in House Bill two thousand nine. That is still unclear as to, um, it gives the county the, to set it anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five percent. But. What that is. Um, if it's of the total tax, what the total tax abatement would be, if it would just be of what the school district who is affected by the tax abatement would have gotten if it's just. A percentage of that total. Um, it's still unclear, so there's some new things and those go into effect on September twenty-third of this year, so there.
Gonna be cleared up.
Uh, there's a question as to whether it will be a. What's the, another short session cleanup? To go back to the legislation to define those terms, um, I was listening, uh, to Mallory Roberts' presentation during the last AOC. Meeting on it. And so there's definitely still some more fine tuning to come with the new legislation regarding enterprise zones that got thrown into that house bill.
Package everything together just to get it through.
It was a little crazy there.
At the very end.
At the very end. I'm not sure, that's one of those, I may, they discover months later what they actually did and. Yeah, they don't, they're gonna have to mix and stuff, I'm sure. Um, okay, let me see what else I have on my. Calendar, okay. This is, okay, ongoing struggles with. Frontier nine-one-one, just want you to know that we still have significant shortages of dispatchers. Um, the new director is working on that, part of the holdup honestly is we haven't been able to set, uh, settle on a wage, um, because. We're negotiations, the dispatchers decided to unionize and so we're in the process of negotiating the first CBA. Which means we're not able to set wages until that's signed, which means the director's not able to go out and actively recruit because we don't know what these people are gonna be paid once they come on board, so.
So. Can I give you some feedback?
Um, sure.
I heard at North Court the other day and that. This would be concerning, I think, and even at a risk factor, that there was a. Probably a freeway stop, I don't know the details, and somebody was. Arrested. And held in a. Back of the vehicle. For two hours, who turned out to not be the individual that nine-one-one told him was. That would be a big deal.
Yeah, so there's, um, a process and there's a mistake that happens. A chain of command that goes up that eventually gets to Jessica and then they do a. They do a review of the call then with her and she has a whole process when there's something.
Was that in Wasco County then?
Sherman, probably. Yeah, so I think, I forget what the terminology is, Joe might be familiar, but, um. There's, yeah, if there's a mishandled call, then there's a process that it goes up, I think, to the head of the department and then it. Gets escalated over to the, um, to Jessica, the head of frontier and then she doesn't, they do an after action review.
Birthday was incorrect.
Yeah. Part of it, I will say, like, um, they've been operating. With, I think, a grand total of five dispatchers. For, for like comparison's sake, like when they're fully functioning, they should have twelve sitting at those terminals and so. It means that folks have not had vacations for, and no excuse, obviously, like, they want, they need to be. Handle each call exactly how they should, but.
To everything going on, you know, Dejuson County takes off, takes up so much. Uh, of their time, but, uh, then you got fire season too. And they're just overwhelmed right now, so I understand mistakes happen, but then, you know, it needs, definitely needs a review and. See how that was, why that was done.
Yeah, they are.
Imagine when the truck wrecked on the bridge down here, that.
That was, yeah.
Command wasn't followed there either. And so that's gonna be under review as well.
Yeah, and the great thing about Jessica is this is not her first rodeo and she strikes me as being pretty by the book. Um, she has high expectations for herself and the team. So, um, I think. Like, part of it, I, I hope will be alleviated as she gets more seasoned dispatchers, because I was gonna say of the five. I'm gonna say two or three of those have been on terminals by themselves for maybe a couple of months. So there's also obviously greater room for mistakes when you've got newbies who are trying to learn that too, so. Part of the board's. Way to try to mitigate that is we're, um, still hiring. Contractor dispatchers who are coming in from other centers, so they'll come in, say on a weekend. Allow some of our folks to get, um, rest and, um, to have vacation days and things like that, so we're still using those because. The problem or the challenge with onboarding, especially people who are new to it, is that. The background checks, all of that take their time and then once somebody's cleared and actually hired, it's, it can be up to like six to twelve months before they actually can have a terminal by themselves. Which means that people. Regular staff are not only dispatching, they're also having to train. The newbies and, and do the supervisory stuff that's coming in and helping them get up to speed, so. It's, it's still a mess. But I feel at least now that we have a solid leadership. Team where it's not elected officials trying to cobble together and to his credit, like Gary kept that thing. That was basically, I think, his full-time job for a couple of months, trying to keep it. Afloat and moving forward, so, um, like. But I, I. No one was happier in, in, uh, on the border elsewhere when Jessica Lynch showed up.
Than Gary?
Than Gary, it was a big, it was a big undertaking that he, um, had to do.
And she's good to deal with too, and so, very helpful. And until it gets fully stopped, we've just been learning to ask very specific questions.
Yeah, but there's definitely like. There's a, there should be a chain of command to address when there's, there's a probable call. Um, in place, um, let me see, tomorrow is the first workshop for our Rocket two point O process. Um, so this one's gonna be focused on. Sort of cementing the workforce development pathway, um, that you guys saw in my. Slides a couple of months ago. Um, so really getting specific on, okay, once we get the kids, if they go through OAC, they still love it, what's the next step? How do we make sure that we're keeping them engaged and also starting to, them to get the classes and training they need so that when they're graduating, they're able to step into early education careers? Um, so we're gonna be talking about that with the community college, the school districts, um. And, um, workforce development, some of the other community partners, that will happen tomorrow. So I'll, I'll be coming back probably with more. What their recommendations are and kind of how that looks. Already mentioned that I was working or looking at the. Already mentioned that I was working or looking at the um. Land trust model for housing. So I'll come back with more information on that. What else? Let me just see, I feel like there was more. Oh, um, so Rachel Ware, who was. On too, but I won't put her on the spot, is on, is um. On board, she's our new finance director, has hit the ground running. Um, is learning our systems and also thinking about ways to improve them. I would expect in the upcoming court. Meetings in August, possibly September, that she'll have some initial recommendations for us to look at. Improving some of our um, accounting systems. So. Um, but she's been fantastic uh, so far. And so we're really happy that she's on board.
Put her on the spot, put her on the spot.
Yeah, I won't put you on the spot, Rachel. You, she'll come in prepared for. For when she's ready to make recommendations, but just so folks know that, that, that transition is, is happening now and it's going really smoothly. Um. Is there anything I'm missing, Delaney?
Cybersecurity and emails, where we at with that?
On with.
She sent an email out, we're all gonna have to go in and re-log in and all that stuff, and that hasn't happened to me and I'm dreading it when it does.
You, you were on the list, um, so that is. We are on the final stages of that. Um, they are just did a check to get. Um, some of the other things needed on some of staff's computers that they needed to do, the multi-factor authentication for the email. It will be very, it's not a very difficult process. What will happen is when you log into your Outlook, it will ask you. If you want to have a verification code sent to you by phone number or by email, you pick, you enter, it sends you a code, you put that in. And you don't have to do it again until you are looking at your email somewhere else. Like, if you do it on your mobile device, it'll only ask you to do it once. And then it will maybe ask you to do it a couple of times throughout the year, but it's not a consistent every time thing. Um, it's very, um, both, I'm Miranda and Liz and I have all had it turned on for the better part of a year and I think I've only maybe had to do it like four times. So it's, it'll be, so we're there. Um, we just got um. Our next level, which is the know before software that we got as part of our RadCom um, increase. That will be additional cybersecurity, email malware and phishing training. That we are gonna start sending out to employees probably in September. Um, but that will be a really great way for them to, to get our employees trained up on how to read emails and flag them if they think they're suspicious. And what to kind of look for in those things.
Yeah, cause I had one that. Said something dot payment, dot voucher and wanted me to click on it to. Go look at a payment voucher and I was like.
I got three dockys.
And those ones are even, those ones, cause they're coming from legitimate businesses.
See ya.
So I think that that is kind of where we're really ramping up all that stuff, because they're also starting to get more sophisticated in their. Teams as they send them out.
Making it look like it's a real. Yeah, this looked like a, I sent a picture of it to Miranda that I looked at it and went, hmm, nah.
I had a deal today that was different. There's a green transportation email that's coming into the other email all the time. And today it came into my regular focus email and I don't know why. I've got some stuff coming into the focus that never has before.
I don't know, they're crappy little people.
Um, the only other thing that I have that I am going to is next week, I'm gonna go to La Grande and participate in Eastern Orient Economic Summit. I don't know who they saw.
Yeah.
I'm gonna take the housing tour. On Thursday.
Are they doing any um? Three dimensions, what is it?
Free printing?
Yeah, housing in La Grande. I know they aren't John Day, but.
I don't believe so. It wasn't on the list of things that they're showing. But there is an interesting developer that's up there that, uh, that actually you might have come up, three of you at county college.
The one that was doing the veteran housing with those, like six hundred. Square foot little housing unit.
Like a hundred thousand dollars-ish. And I thought if you could couple that with like the. The land trust model, you could actually do a pretty cost-effective development where people would be able to afford. That price point pretty easily. Um. So anyways, something I'm gonna go. So I'm gonna go see what Union County is doing that might be applicable here and I'll report back if I find anything interesting that we might wanna. Pursue. Um, I think that is all I have to go to the order. If not, it is eleven fifty-five and we will adjourn the meeting.